Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the September the 7th Dare County Porter Commissioners Meeting. At this time, I'd like to call forward Reverend Cindy Simpson for an invocation. Is she here this morning? She didn't make it. Oh, well, okay.
Can you hear anything from her?
All right. Commissioner Couch, would you lead us in invocation, please?
Let's just take a minute and sit, please. We thank you for this wonderful blessing that you've given us and our citizens and the life that we live here on our little sandbar. We ask for guidance and inspiration today as we tackle those issues that have such great bearing on our quality of life. We thank you for all your many blessings on behalf of our families and on behalf of those that we love. We thank you this day. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner. May we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
County Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the Chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, County Manager. I appreciate that. I only have one item this morning, but before I present that, I'd like to recognize former Commissioner Max Dutton is here with us this morning. Max, thank you for being here. It's a pleasure to see you. With that being said, I have one item, and bear with me this morning, if you will, on this item because it, I think it's, it bears considerable amount of consideration from those of you who choose not to be vaccinated. Last 17, 18 months have been difficult for us throughout this country and certainly throughout the county. I'd like to read something from a doctor who has been dealing with the pandemic for the last 17, 18 months. And if I mispronounce her last name, I apologize because it's an article I just recently received, Anita Sikara. She's an infectious disease physician and clinical instructor of health and science at the UCLA School of Medicine, and she writes, it was an op-ed. I hope those that have not been vaccinated will certainly hear my comments this morning. If not, I would certainly ask the media that's covering our meeting today to look at this article and share this article with our citizens because I think it's compelling and I think it bears listening to. She writes, "If you believe you can ride out the pandemic without getting vaccinated, you could not be more wrong. This virus will find you." My patient sat at the edge of his bed gasping for air while he tried to tell me his story, pausing to catch his breath after each word. The plastic tubes delivering oxygen through his nose hardly seemed adequate to stop his chest from heaving. He looked exhausted. He had tested positive for the coronavirus 10 days earlier. He was under 50 years of age, mild hypertensive, but otherwise in good health. Eight days earlier, he started coughing and having severe fatigue. His doctors started him on antibiotics. It did not work. Fearing his symptoms were worsening, he started taking some hydrochloro, and Sheila, I'm gonna pronounce this wrong, so hydrochlorine quinine he had found on the Internet. It did not work. He was now experiencing shortness of breath while doing routine daily activities such as walking from his bedroom to the bathroom or putting on his shoes. He was a shell of his former self. He eventually made his way to a facility where he could receive monoclonal antibodies, the lab-produced transfusion that substitutes for the body's own antibodies. It did not work. He finally ended up in the ER with dangerously low oxygen levels, exceeding high inflammatory markers, and patchy areas of infection all over his lungs. Nothing had helped. He was getting worse. He could not breathe. His wife and two young children were at home, all infected with the COVID. He and his wife had decided not to get vaccinated. Last year, a case like this would have flattened me. I would have wrestled with the sadness on how unfair life was, battled with the angst of how unlucky he was. This year, I struggle to understand. It was August 2021, not 2020. This vaccine had been widely available for months in the United States, free to anyone who wanted it, even offered in drugstores and supermarkets. Cutting-edge, revolutionary, mind-blowing, lifesaving vaccines were available where people shopped for groceries and they didn't want them. Outside his hospital door, I took a deep breath. I then went in. I had been working with COVID for some 17 months, all day, every day. I had cared for hundreds of COVID patients. We all had, meaning her profession, been working a long weeks, long enough to help us recover from the unending ordeal. Compassion, fatigue was setting in for those of us who had not left the hardest years of our, had now lived the hardest years of our profession, even hope now was in short supply. Shouting through my N95 mask and the noise of the HEPA filter, I introduced myself. I calmly asked him why he did not get vaccinated. Well, I'm not an anti-vaxxer or anything. I was just waiting for FDA to approve the vaccine first. I didn't want to take anything experimental. I didn't want the governments, I didn't want to be a government guinea pig, and I don't trust that it's safe. "Well," I said, "I can pretty much guarantee we would have never met had you gotten vaccinated because you would have never been hospitalized. All of our COVID units are full and every single patient in them is unvaccinated. Numbers don't lie. The vaccine works." This was a common excuse for people, that people gave for not getting vaccinated, fearing the vaccine because the Food and Drug Administration had only guaranteed its emergency use authorization. So far, not permanent approval, yet the treatments he had turned to, antibiotics, monoclonal antibodies, and hydrochlorine were considered experimental with mixed evidence to support their use. The only proven lifesaver we had in this pandemic is a vaccine that many people don't want. A vaccine we gave away to other countries because supplies overwhelmed demand the U.S., a vaccine people in other countries stand in line for hours to receive if they get it at all. "Well," I said, "I'm going to treat you with remdesivir," which only recently the FDA approved. I explained that it had been under an EUA for most of last year and had not been studied or administered as widely as the COVID-19 vaccine had been. That more than 350 million doses of COVID-19 vaccine had been administered in the U.S. along with more than 4.7 billion doses worldwide without any overwhelming catastrophic side effects. Not literally as many doses of remdesivir had been given or studied in people, and its long-term side effects are still unknown. I said, "Do you still want me to give it to you?" "Yes," he responded, "whatever it takes to save my life." It did not work. My patient died nine days later from fatal stroke. We, the care team, reconciled this loss by telling ourselves he made a personal choice not to get vaccinated, not to protect himself or his family. We did everything we could with what we had to save him. This year, this tragedy, this unnecessarily entirely preventable loss was on him. The burden of this pandemic now rests on the shoulders of the unvaccinated, on those who are eligible to get vaccinated but choose not to. A decision they defend by declaring vaccination is a deeply personal choice. It absolutely is. But perhaps never in history has anyone's personal choice impacted the world as a whole as it does right now. When hundreds of thousands of people continue to die, when the most vulnerable members of society, our children, cannot be vaccinated, the luxury choice ceases to exist. If you believe the pandemic is over and you can't ride it out without getting vaccinated, you could not be more wrong. The virus will find you. If you believe, "I'll just wait until the FDA approves the vaccine first," you may not live to see the day. If you believe, "I get infected, I'll just go to the hospital and get treated," this is no guarantee we can save your life nor even promise we'll have the bed for you. If you believe I'm pregnant and I don't want the vaccine to affect me, my body, or my future fertility, it matters little if you're not able to, if you're not allowed to see your newborn. If you believe I won't get my child, children vaccinated because I don't know what the long-term effects will be, it matters little if they don't live long enough for you to find out. If you believe I'll just let everything else, everyone else get vaccinated around me so I don't have to, there are 93 million eligible unvaccinated people in the herd who think the same way you do and getting in the way of ending this pandemic. If you believe vaccinated people are getting infected anyway, so what's the point? The vaccine was built to, built to prevent hospitalizations and deaths from severe illness. Instead of fatal pneumonia, those with breakthrough infections have a short, bad cold, so the vaccine has already proved itself. The vaccinated are not dying of COVID-19. SARS-CoV-2, the vaccine that causes COVID-19, has mutated countless times during the pandemic, adapting to survival. Stacked up against a human race that has resisted change every step of the way, including wearing masks, social distancing, quarantining, and now refusing lifesaving vaccines, it is easy to see who will win this war. The most effective thing you can do to protect yourself, your loved ones, and the world is to simply get vaccinated, and it will work. This is from a doctor, physician, infectious disease, clinical instructor of health and science at the U.C.A. School of Medicine, and this is one incident that she had with a patient. Murray Helen, I hope you write something about this. Thank you. County Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to the presentation of the county service pins. We have eight this morning, and first on our list, we have Ricky Burris. She's a customer service representative, and she's getting her 10-year pin from Becky Huff.
Good morning, ladies, and welcome.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Ricky Burris is here to receive her 10-year service pin from Dare County. She was hired by the Dare County Sheriff's Department on September 6, 2011, as a 9/11 dispatcher. Her duties there were to dispatch police, fire, and EMS. She answered emergency and non-emergency calls and at times administered lifesaving instructions to the caller while staying on the phone with them until EMS arrived. Even though she loved the work she was doing, when a position came open in the tax collections department, Ricky applied in order to have more stable work hours as she had two teenagers at home. On November 6, 2016, Ricky joined the tax collections department as a collection specialist. After her first year with our department, she became the backup occupancy and food and beverage administrator. In May of 2018, I moved Ricky to the open position of occupancy and food and beverage administrator. She's responsible for collecting the occupancy and food and beverage taxes on a monthly basis as well as the monthly financial balancing. She contacts new owners when needed and maintains the rental databases received from the rental companies across the county. She's also a backup for Adlorm Tax Collections when needed. Ricky has been a valuable asset to our department, and I sincerely hope she will be here for many more years to come. She's not allowed to leave. So, thank you, Ricky, and I appreciate all your, everything you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Congratulations, Rick.
I will say while they're standing up here, it's not very often that you get a call from the public that commends the tax office for talking to them, but believe it or not, I have gotten that call this year from somebody that called and said that they were so helpful, took them through the taxing. We have those MSDs on there this year, and it's a little bit confusing, and so, good work, and I think Ricky's a part of that, so I appreciate what you do.
Absolutely. All right.
Next on our list is Bonnie Cooper. Bonnie's a community service technician, and today she gets her 10-year pin. Bonnie's dedicated her time, energy, and heart to the residents of Dare County as a community social services technician for 10 years. She has transported many residents, young and old, to essential appointments. Bonnie has traveled near and far, no matter the time of day or night, to ensure that residents get to their destinations. She's often rescheduled her own personal appointments so she can transport a client to their appointments. Bonnie is much more than just a driver to her clients. She gets to know them. She knows whether they need special accommodations or medical equipment to travel. Bonnie often even knows their favorite places to stop for lunch. Bonnie checks on her clients when they have things going on. She goes well above just being their driver. Bonnie truly cares about the residents she transports. Thank you, Bonnie, for your 10 years of dedicated service to Dare County and its residents. We also have a 10-year pin for Butch Luke. Butch is a metering service technician with the water department. Butch began his career as a wastewater treatment operator, working at the Detention Center, wastewater treatment plant, Stumpy Point wastewater treatment plant, and the various county-owned LP systems. He also insisted in installing the new Camstrup AMR/AMI meters at Stumpy Point. Wastewater Treatment Program Section was reorganized a year ago, and we had a need for someone to assist the meeting, the metering coordinator. Butch was transferred to the metering technician position. He helps with the reading of the Camstrup meters, retrieving historical information from them, enters meter replacement information into Munis, investigates meter issues, and also installs the meters. Butch recently learned how to locate the meters with the GIS collector. That information is placed on water maps for future reference. Butch always has a smile, is eager to learn new things, and is very dedicated, always willing to help. Butch has a very important role to the water department team. Thank you, Butch, for your 10 years of service to Dare County. Next, we have Mary Jernigan. Mary is a leisure activity coordinator, and she's getting her 15-year pin. Mary started at the bomb center in September of 2006 as the leisure activity coordinator. She also serves as the home-delivered meal coordinator for the Beach area. Mary is the first person that people see when they enter the bomb center's front door. Earlier in her career, Mary had worked with Dare County Social Services. She served on the Community Advisory Council for several years and also volunteered her time with Virginia Dare business and professional women. The seniors love her. Thank you, Mary, for your 15 years of service to Dare County. Next, we have a 15-year pin. This goes to Steve Gualtney, who's one of our auto body mechanics. Steve has been with Fleet Maintenance Department of the Dare County Public Works Department for 15 years. As the auto body mechanic, Steve has kept our fleet looking its best, whether it's repairing dents and dings, combating rust and corrosion, or doing full paint jobs. He's done paintwork on many buildings, on many things in this county, not just automobiles. He's painted dumpsters, county buildings, garbage trucks, and even the med flight helicopter. Steve is very talented, has an eye for detail in restoration, and is a great asset to Dare County. We look forward to many more years of his expertise and thank him for his 15 years of service to the county. Next, we have George Bowman. George is a community program coordinator with the sheriff's office, and he receives a 25-year pin. George was initially involved in the patrol operations for the sheriff's department for a number of years. He's never been one to shy away from a task. George has served as the director of the Camp Salt, which stands for Save a Life Together, for 11 years. When first assigned this task, he cut trees and removed old structures and overgrowth at the site with the help of Public Works. He handles all the maintenance and day-to-day upkeep of the camp, which is located near the First Flight High School. This free camp offers opportunities for students and adults for confidence, strengthening, and team building. With George's expertise, the county has hosted not only our schools but private entities and other government entities. He has touched many lives and does a great job in keeping up with all the needs of attendees to the camp, as well as maintaining the Alpine Tower and the rock wall on the site. Thank you, George, for your 25 years of service to the county and helping our youth by providing opportunities to make good choices. Next, we have a 20, another 25-year pin. This is for Brandy Bohannon at the Community Service Manager. Brandy came in to work with the county in September of 1996 as an adult social service, as an adult services social worker and in-home aid supervisor. In December of 1999, Brandy was promoted to run and manage the bomb center, which is where she is today. Brandy is a wholesome, bright, and energetic person. She is also confident, respectful, and thoughtful. Brandy is very active with many groups throughout northeastern North Carolina, such as the Alamo Memorial Commission. She has been the chair and vice-chair on the Healthy Carolinians of the Outer Banks for a total of 18 years. Brandy is currently the ship coordinator for Dare County. Ship is the seniors' health insurance information program and is a program that provides volunteer counselors that assist residents with signing up for Medicare plans and supplements. Brandy keeps her eye on her goals to ensure they are met. During the pandemic, all county employees have had to be flexible with leadership. During this time of uncertainty, Brandy has been calm and confident, and as a result, the Dare County Bomb Center has run very smoothly. Brandy, we thank you for your 25 years of service to Dare County, especially to our seniors, and we hope that you have many more. And then finally, we have a 30-year pin this morning for Debbie Dutton, and that presentation will be made by Sheila Davies.
Good morning. So I had to write my comments down because I wanted to make sure that I can get through them. Hopefully, you'll hear as I share some great words about Debbie, just how much I adore and respect this woman. So, it is such an honor to be here this morning to present Debbie with her 30-year service pin to Dare County. To say Debbie is an extraordinary individual is a complete understatement. Debbie currently serves as the Clinical Services and Nursing Director for the Public Health Division. She oversees a clinical and support team of 36 individuals who provide services including maternal health, child health, communicable diseases, care and management, and school health. Debbie started with the Health Department in 1991 as a public health nurse. In October of 2005, she was promoted to school nurse supervisor, and in June of 2015, she was promoted to her current role. 1991 was a big year for Debbie. Not only did she start working for the county, but in November of that year, she married her husband Max, who's here with us that Chairman already recognized. So this coming November, Debbie and Max will be celebrating their 30th wedding anniversary. So, a big year for her. Debbie and Max have two beautiful grown daughters and two grandsons. Aside from her family, one of Debbie's passions, or maybe better phrased, therapies outside of work is running. Debbie has completed one marathon and numerous half marathons with her daughters, Rachel and Sarah. Debbie has many achievements throughout her 30 years. In 2000, she was recognized by Dare County as not only Employee of the Month in December of that year, but also Employee of the Year. Debbie, in 2011, received the North Carolina for Healthy Communities Citation of Merit Award. Debbie was selected to serve as a co-facilitator of the review course for nurses who are sitting for national certification for school nurses, and she served as a facilitator for a leadership conference for school nurses in Greenville. Debbie was also instrumental in the creation and implementation of the Peer Power Program that is now in our schools. And as nursing director, she expanded our prenatal services from just one day a week to five days a week so we could serve more at-risk women who needed prenatal care. Beyond the tangible contributions is Debbie's immeasurable impact on her students when she was in the schools, on their families, and on our community. Debbie has faced the biggest public health challenge over the last 18 months as a true warrior. She has led the clinical services COVID response, including contact tracing, case investigation, reporting, and providing nearly 30,000 COVID vaccinations at our vaccine clinics. Debbie has spent countless hours, seven days a week, even though the county manager yells at us all the time, managing the pandemic response with grace, poise, professionalism, and amazingly keeping a smile on her face. Debbie is truly a remarkable human. She exudes kindness, compassion, and love. She is a genuine, respected leader who is adored by her team. She is knowledgeable and the epitome of a servant leader. In addition to serving and caring for Dare County, Debbie also gives back to her community. For 10 years, she coached the cheer teams between Manio Middle School and Manio High School. She served as an inaugural board member for the YMCA, which is where Debbie and I first met about 21 years ago, and she's very active in her church. I feel certain God looks down upon Debbie and smiles, knowing his creation is a model for how to treat others and to show such love to her family and her community. If it hasn't shown through already, I will have to directly say that I cherish Debbie as a person and am grateful beyond measure for all she has done for Dare County and for public health. She is a model employee, citizen, wife, mother, and grandmother, and a loved friend. So Max retired about six weeks ago, I think about that time, and Debbie is unsure of her plans, and while I hope she wants to stay another three to five years at least, I do know every day she's with us is a gift. So thank you, Debbie, for sharing your time, talent, and treasure with Dare County for the last 30 years. We are beyond grateful, and we love you. And hopefully I didn't lose your pin. No. Thank you. (applause)
If I may, thank you for this opportunity. I could not have asked for a better career. I am so happy. I love this county. I love what I do. I love my work. I love Sheila. I love my coworkers. I don't have the words to express how grateful and how thankful I am for my last 30 years, and I'm not done. I'm not going anywhere yet, but truly know that I'm the one who's blessed. I'm so blessed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Hold on before you go. My wife and I were both fortunate. When we got our vaccination, Debbie administered that for us, our COVID-19 vaccination, and I was over there a number of times, visiting and watching. And y'all can see, just listening to her this morning, her passion for what she does and her sincere work ethic in what she does in caring for the public. And just recently, the county manager and I toured Health and Human Services and the facility to check on the progress, and soon as we walked in the door, Debbie and her staff were great to see us, and they were already preparing for the booster and getting ready for that. So they're on top of things, and they were, just as they were administering the COVID, but Debbie, we can't thank you enough for your service. We have something in common. My wife and I, in November, will celebrate our 30th anniversary. So Max, you and I married up, brother.
Thank you.
Hey, Bob. Not only is she a runner, she's fast. Does she beat you, Ervin?
Oh, yeah.
Chairman, next on the agenda is the Employee of the Month, and if Jenny Collins would come forward to make that presentation, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to introduce Hannah Wallace, who's probably wondering, I got her hair under false pretenses, but surprise. Hannah was nominated by her shift officers, the three lieutenants, and her captain. Her captain is here today in the audience. But Hannah's one of those types of folks that has limited giving of her and wants to share her knowledge. She is a paramedic with us, and she is one of the folks that likes to engage with our new, the training of our new providers. And over this last month, she's been giving considerable amount of time training two of our advanced EMTs. And as you understand that once an EMT or an advanced EMT or a paramedic goes through their classroom training, there is a large gap to what life is actually like in the street because patients don't fit that textbook. And so we have a structured program that we use folks like Hannah that help bridge that knowledge gap and skill gap and experience gap with those folks. So she's been very engaged every second of the day, pretty much, in training these folks, and she has such this infectious upbeat attitude that it really helps folks get the information, puts them at ease, and allows that training to incur. She's got numerous patient accolades for both patients and families because of her demeanor when she is on the scene and explaining what exactly is happening to them, and they're grateful to be able to have that. So we recognize her attitude and deep passion. This last year, this year and a half, has been extremely stressful for anybody in healthcare, and being able to have that time and patience and deep caring for folks as they are probably experiencing their worst day of their life when they call us, Hannah greets them there and puts them at ease. So Hannah, thank you for your efforts, and I'd like to present the Employee of the Month Award to you, and congratulations for a job well done.
Thank you.
This cannot go in the front of the ambulance because it's a loose object. We'll find a place to put it. So thank you very much.
Wow, thank you.
Congratulations, Hannah.
Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time to spend set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you. When I do come forward, please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light on the podium that comes on when your time begins. There's a yellow light that will come on when you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. I do not have anyone signed up. Is there anyone here that would like to speak at public comment? I see no one here. Is there anyone in Buxton that would like to speak at public comment?
No comment from Buxton.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that brings us then to close the public comment, and we move on to item five on the agenda. That's a resolution, and Dave Paulson will make that presentation.
Good morning, Dave.
Good morning. This item is your first step for the debt, for the beach nourishment projects, and for the improvements to the Justice Center that I talked to you about in the last meeting. Cheryl is going to, and actually, before I start on my resolution, Cheryl's handed out two handouts. The first, last Thursday, we took the bids for the beach nourishment projects. Coastal protection engineering estimate for this portion of the project, just the construction, was $35.6 million. You have one bid at $45.9, one bid at $34.5, and Weeks Marine at almost $28 million. So what Coastal Protection is doing, did Friday and is going to do this week, is get with each of the towns, see if there's any adjustments to the cubic yards they want because we had a pretty favorable per cubic yard bid, and then go through on the back of this page are all the, I don't think he called them, he calls them discretionary instead of bid alternates, but he's evaluating all of that and how it fits in with the bid amount and his estimates, and we've got two weeks to get that back, less than two weeks to get that back to you because at the next meeting, we'll be asking you to do the final debt resolution and award the bids, and somehow, I'm not sure what form, but something to do with the contract so we can move forward with the LGC and the construction. So good news on that one. The second one with the two blue boxes on it, we did financing bids last week also for this, for the county debt for this beach nourishment project. The two in blue were bids for a Ford contract in case we, oh, and in case we had a 2023 project, which takes me back to the first page, these were all 22 bids. We didn't have any 2023 bids. So it's a 2022 project. So we had, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 financing bids, and we're going to be awarding to Regions Bank, who financed the Buxton Beach Nursery last time, at over five years at a 0.89%. They also bid a 1.04 for a callable, but at less than 1%, and it's only five years. We don't care about being able to call it and retire it early. So good news on those two things. As I said, this item is initial resolution, and I gave you the schedule for the financing, which ends with the LGC meeting on October the 5th and our debt closing on October 13th. It does the, it does the normal things our first resolutions do, so it is the project's in the best interest of the county. The project's essential. We won't exceed $13 million. We're using an installment financing contract. There's no property tax increase necessary. The county's taxing power is not pledged. We're not in default. We're not in trouble with the LGC, and that you're going to hold a public hearing on the projects, which is your next agenda item, and you're authorizing the county manager and finance director to proceed with an installment financing contract. You're directing me to file the application with the local government commission, which we did last week, and we're authorized to retain Parker Povant as a bond counsel, DEC as financial advisor, and Piper Scott as placement agent, and your requested action is to adopt the initial financing resolution.
Any questions, Dave, prior to moving forward? I have one. Is anybody else over? Commissioner Ross?
I was just curious, Dave, as you were going through the sheet with the two blue boxes on it, on the Regions bids, and this is curiosity only, it's not at all a challenge. They're offering us a lower rate at .989% if we restrict them. If they're given callable flexibility at any time, it seems opposite of what it should be.
Is the other side where we can call it and retire it early?
Oh, got it, okay. Forget the question. I thought it was callable for that. Okay, got it. Now it makes sense. Thank you.
Anyone else? Dave, on the bids for the re-nourishment, what was the proposed construction date of those?
I believe the Weeks was May 1st. I think Great Lakes was April 1st, and Weeks was May 1st.
2022?
Yes, sir.
Super, super. Good deal.
And Dave, were they starting in Southern Shores?
I don't know. Each one of them, Ken Wilson has the proposed order that they put in the bid. They put it in their bid, but I don't know what that was.
It's a contractor choice, though. However they do it most efficiently is they get to pick where they start and which direction they go. They don't usually start at the far north or the far south. They start somewhere in the middle and go both ways, and so they'll pick where they start.
I have one more question for Dave, real quick. The attachment which shows the detail from the three bids, just curious, the sand fencing in Kitty Hawk appears to be a bit of an outlier. Is there something to the quarter of a million dollars in Kitty Hawk sand fencing, or is that just length of fence and so forth?
It was the, let's see, let's see, duck. It's the length. It's in the left, toward the left, under quantity. So Kitty Hawk's getting 4,000, and I honestly don't know if that's feet or yards. As compared to Southern Shores, it's 3,000. Duck is 840, and Kilohills is 1,250.
Yeah, I was just curious.
It's more, it's more. It's a.
The Kitty Hawk beach is much narrower and erodes quickly, and so the idea is if you put more fencing, maybe they can protect that beach longer.
They're all the same unit price.
Yeah, okay.
All right, pleasure, the board.
Moved to approve the resolution.
Sir.
Okay, a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross to approve the resolution is presented and has been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
No, this is pretty straightforward. It's, there's nothing, nothing to overanalyze.
Thank you. All right, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed like that? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
One thing I'll add, and I'd like to thank Dave and Dustin, this one has been a little bit challenging on the timing and trying to get things lined up, and they held both the contractors and everyone involved in place and pushed them to make these deadlines in spite of requests, to change deadlines. I mean, the bidding companies wanted us to extend the times and all that, and we sort of held their feet to the fire. The result was, we got really good bids, and by pushing, we also got really, really good interest rates, and so by them holding everybody's feet to the fire, it really benefited the project a lot, so.
I agree, Bobby. Among other things, these guys and Dave and his team do an excellent job in this, so thank you.
That brings us to item six. This is a public hearing on the installment financing you just looked at and on the resolution you just approved. If anyone would like to speak to that, the rules with respect to the public hearing that I announced earlier would apply to this as well. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to that issue? I see no one here. I have no one signed up. Is there anyone in Buxton that would like to speak to that issue?
No comment in Buxton.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we would close that public hearing, and we would move to item seven, and Dave will make that presentation as well.
All right.
All right, this is the 2021A installment financing contract, which is, this is the final resolution to approve the financing. The local government commission will address this and approve it at their meeting tomorrow. It's $3 million for the purchase of the Manio Masonic Lodge and the Mako Mike's property and improvements to the Masonic Lodge property and cost of issuance for the debt. We took financing bids on this one. This is a 10-year financing. We got seven responses ranging from a high of 1.90 to a low of 1.48 from First Bank, and that is the Kilohills branch. They have been great to work with, but I'll tell you, it's been, it's been a process of governmental budget and debt education, so. But 148 at, over 10 years, and it allows for prepayment at any time. So the resolution, we're asking you makes, and excuse me, the local government commission is a week from tomorrow. It's the 14th, but it makes the same types of findings, findings and statements of fact. Again, it's the best interest of the county entering the contract with First Bank and the deed of trust, which pledges just the Manio property. You held a public hearing on August the 2nd. I've given you copies to look at of the contract and the deed of trust. The resolution says, or resolves that the projects and the financing of them at $3 million at 1.48%, and the instruments, which are all the documents, the contract and the deed of trust are approved, and you're allowing the county manager, the finance director, and the clerk, and we're authorizing and directed to execute and deliver the instruments with any changes that we might see, think is necessary to close. Same thing, the authorized officers are approved to do everything we have to do to comply with the provisions of the documents, and the authorized officers are designated as county representatives. The county attorney's authorized to provide an opinion, and the authorized officers are to supply all information and perform all acts to execute the documents, and our request is to adopt that resolution.
Okay, any questions, Dave, at this time?
Moved to adopt.
Okay, as a motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobin to approve as presented, it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further questions? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like that? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Mr. Ross, you appreciate this. Dave mentioned it earlier, but this bank has been a great bank to work with. They've been easy, but they're used to doing commercial loans to build an office building or a warehouse or a restaurant or whatever. They're not used to doing government work.
So they're in the same boat I've been in for years.
Some of the documents and some of the things that are routine in what they do are not routine in what we do, and so Dave and I and the bond counsel have spent some amount of time trying to sort through and educate ourselves, but educate them as well as to why some things will work and some things won't. So it's not just different in the way that we do accounting, it's different in the way you do your banking as well.
Nothing's easy in government. I take solace that I'm not alone, Bobby.
That's right. That's right. All right, item eight on the agenda is a zoning text amendment, and Donna will make that presentation.
Good morning, Donna.
Good morning. So this is a zoning text amendment, and it's been submitted by Prime Engineering on behalf of United Parcel Service. The United Parcel Service, UPS, has a facility here on Roanoke Island and Etheridge Road, and they have plans to expand their facility. The site is zoned I-1 industrial, and the I-1 district has a 35% lot coverage. And UPS has a policy that their facilities have pavement. And so that 35% lot coverage was causing an issue with them. And the guys from Prime Engineering come in and met with me, and we said, I suggested that they seek a text amendment. So they filed the paperwork to amend the I-1 lot coverage to be 60%. The I-1, the way that it works, there's a list of permitted uses, but it also has the language in there that allows all of the uses of the C-3 district. C-3 district allows 60% lot coverage. As we were discussing this at the planning board meeting, the, an alternative was suggested that we simply amend the I-1 district instead of amending and adding to the lot coverage that we add, that we amend the C-3 district to add package distribution and delivery services. So that's in the C-3. It gets the benefit of the 60% lot coverage, but we're not expanding the lot coverage of the I-1. And so the planning board felt that that was a better option. I agree that that's a better option. The guys at UPS and at Prime Engineering are comfortable with that. Before we can consider that, we have to have a public hearing on it, and that's the requested action today, that we schedule a public hearing to amend the C-3 text to allow package distribution and delivery services. And the first available date for that is your next meeting on January, on September the 20th at 5:00.
Thank you, Donna. Any questions, Donna? And pleasure of the board.
I move that a hearing of the UPS zoning text amendment be scheduled for September 20th, 2021 at 5:00 p.m.
Sir.
Okay, there's motions on the floor by Commissioner House to set a public hearing September 20, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion?
I just, I just have a comment.
Pardon?
I just have a comment.
Yes, sir.
They're going to be, UPS and its packages, they're going to be critical to the future of Dare Regional, and they need this and we need this. That's all I got.
That's a good point, and thank you. Any other comments? Those in favor of the motion then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Donna. Appreciate it.
Chairman, that brings us to item nine on the agenda, and this is a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement between the state of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of the opioid litigation. As most of you know, and many have seen in the papers and all that, it appears that the opioid litigation with the pharmaceutical companies has been settled, and there's a $26 billion pot of money nationally that would be distributed among the states and counties throughout the nation. North Carolina participates in that. North Carolina, in order to get, there's, there's a federal formula as to how that money will be distributed. And if you don't want that formula, then the states and the local governments can negotiate a different formula to, to allocate those funds in your particular state. The federal formula allocates about 5% of the money to the local governments, and the rest of it goes to state or some other state-controlled entity. In North Carolina, the counties didn't think that was a good idea, and led by the county associate, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, they formed a group of, they call it their 555 working group, but they had five county commissioners throughout the state, five county attorneys throughout the state, and five county managers throughout the state, sit on a committee to negotiate with the state a different formula to try to allocate a greater percentage of that money to the local governments, which is where the, sort of the rubber meets the road. It's where the treatment and the care for those people that have opioid problems occur. And so the goal was to get that money in the local hands, so the local folks could direct it where it needed to be directed in their communities. I served on that. I served as one of the five county managers on that committee. And we were successful in negotiating a contract or a MOA with the state where the counties get 80% of the money rather than the five, and the state gets 10, and then there's a 5% pool that if everybody signs up within a certain time, you can get an additional 5%. So the counties could get up to 85% of that money in the fund. So it's a, it's unique in that no other state has done that yet. The, the most of the states have a different, that have adopted, have done different, and so it's being held out as a model. We're real proud of it. The association's real proud of it because, again, it allocates the bulk of the proceeds that come to North Carolina right where it needs to go to help people that need help. So this has been in, sort of sitting around here for several months. We've had it. We've talked about it. You all know about it, and we haven't acted on it. The issue that's sort of been hanging around out here in the national settlement, there's a $1.6 billion pot of money that's available for the attorneys. If the National Counsel agrees to the settlement, that's right. If the National Counsel agreed to the settlement, then they're required to take their fee out of that $1.6 billion pot off the top. As you know, when we started all this thing several years ago, we have a contingent fee contract that says we would pay 25% of our money. A 25% contingent fee on a tort case is not unusual, so that, that's what we did. And that's what pretty much everybody in North Carolina that litigated did as well. And what happens is, under the national settlement, to take out of that $1.6 billion pot, you have to waive the 25% contingent fee, which means the money comes off the top. We get all the money that comes to us, stays with us, and it doesn't go back to the attorneys. That 25% does not. Some of the local council, the, there's, the way this thing was structured is there's about five or six national, big national firms that do mass tort litigation like this. They then hooked up with counsel throughout the state. There's three or four or five attorneys in North Carolina that represent everybody. They're the local counsel, and they're teamed up with the national counsel. And as they looked at that $1.6 billion pot and started determining how they were going to allocate it among the thousands of attorneys that are involved, they didn't like, I guess, what the, what they were going to get and what they expected to get weren't the same. And so they've begun trying to negotiate with the states, what they call a backstop, a national backstop, to allow a greater percentage of the attorney's fees to come off the top. And they've used two things as their lever to try to get us to agree, or get counties, not us, but in particular, but counties to agree to that backstop. And one is, there are counties that didn't litigate that will share in the fund, and they're saying if we were to choose to opt out and take our 25%, then it would come out of your money. And those counties that chose not to litigate and don't have an attorney fee provision would get all their money, and they would be a freeloader. And the only way to prevent having a freeloader is to agree to let everybody pay the attorneys more than that $1.6 billion off the top. The second issue that they've talked about a lot is that if they opt out, they could come in and take their 25% off the top of our money. And they've told counties that, you know, in the MOA that we're asking you to approve, it says that we can use the funds for opioid abatement measures and litigation expenses. And they're arguing that litigation expenses do not include attorney's fees, and that potentially you would have to pay the attorney's fees out of your general fund rather than out of your settlement proceeds. We've talked with the Attorney General's Office, who is the other party to this. They say no. Their intent all along was that this would include attorney's fees, and that if, in fact, someone came in and asked for their attorney's fees, we could pay them out of the settlement proceeds, and that would be fine. That hadn't been litigated. I don't know who would litigate it, so it's not a resolved issue. So I suppose that is a potential risk. These funds are being paid out over 18 years, and so the, the risk isn't a huge amount of money, but it could be something. And so that is a risk. I don't, we don't think it's much of a risk. Most, over half of the counties have already approved this. Some of the larger counties will get way more money than Wake County, Guilford County, Forsyth County, you know, the big counties have a new hand over. Those counties have already approved this. And so, again, that risk doesn't seem to be likely. And secondly, it's unlikely that they'll opt out of the $1.6 billion and leave that on the table, in which case none of this would matter. And so I tell you all that to say that I wanted you to have the full story, again, in some of our closed sessions where we've tried to figure out what we were going to do legally. We've talked about some of these things that you all are aware of it already, but I wanted to get it on the record and let the public know. And so this is before you to approve. We hope to get all the, the counties to approve this. The towns that have, or cities with a population of over 30,000 have to approve it. And if we get everyone to approve it, then our number goes up by that 5%. If everyone does not approve it, then there's a significant, there could be a decrease in the funds that come to the state. And so it's before you today. In, there was a lot of information in your packet. I put pretty much everything I had with that, and whatever it is, if you have questions, I'm glad to answer them, but I did, I shared the things, and I think you'd gotten some stuff from the association relative to this as well. So any questions about that? And if not, then I'd ask you to approve that resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like for the county manager to read the resolution into record.
Okay, it'd be fair.
Sure. This is a resolution by the county of Dare approving the memorandum of agreement between the state of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of the opioid litigation. Whereas, as of 2019, the opioid epidemic had taken the lives of more than 16,500 North Carolinians, torn families apart, and ravaged communities from the mountains to the coast. And whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic has compounded the opioid crisis, increasing levels of drug misuse, addiction, and overdose death. And whereas, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention estimates the total economic burden of prescription opioid misuse alone in the United States is $78.5 billion a year, including the cost of health care, lost productivity, addiction treatment, and criminal justice involvement. Whereas, the opioid epidemic has had a significant negative impact upon the citizens of Dare County. And whereas, certain counties and municipalities in North Carolina join with thousands of local governments across the country to file a lawsuit against opioid manufacturers and pharmaceutical distribution companies and hold those companies accountable for their misconduct. And whereas, representatives of the North Carolina local governments, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and the North Carolina Department of Justice have negotiated and prepared a memorandum of agreement to provide for the equitable distribution of proceeds from a settlement of the national opioid litigation to the state of North Carolina and to the individual local governments. And whereas, an agreement in the national opioid litigation has been announced that could potentially bring millions in opioid treatment funds to local governments and the state of North Carolina. And whereas, by signing onto the MOA, the state and local governments maximize North Carolina's share of opioid settlement funds to ensure the needed resources reach communities as quickly, effectively, and directly as possible. Whereas, it is advantageous to all North Carolinians for local governments, including Dare County and its citizens, to sign onto the MOA and demonstrate solidarity in response to the opioid epidemic, and to maximize the share of opioid settlement funds received both in the state and this county to help abate the harm. And whereas, the MOA directs substantial resources over multiple years to local governments on the front lines of the opioid epidemic while ensuring that these resources are used in an effective way to address this crisis. Now therefore be it resolved, Dare County hereby approves the memorandum of agreement between the state of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of the opioid litigation and any subsequent settlement funds that may come into North Carolina as a result of the opioid crisis. Furthermore, Dare County authorizes the county manager or county attorney to take such measures as necessary to comply with the terms of the MOA and receive any settlement funds, including executing any documents related to the allocation of opioid settlement funds and settlement of lawsuits related to this matter. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution and the signed MOA be sent to opioid docs at ncdoj.gov as well as forwarded to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners at communications@ncacc.org. This is the seventh day of September 2021.
To comply with the terms and receive any settlement funds, including executing any documents.
Sir.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, Bobby. I'm sure. Item 10 is an architectural contract for the 2022 EMS station project. As you know, we're in the process of redoing all of our old EMS stations. We're rebuilding one in Kill Devil Hills, we're adding a new one in Kitty Hawk. We're working with Naxhead to do something to renovate or build or do something there. We're working with Radante to renovate or build something there. Again, we're bringing 30-year-old buildings up to speed or replacing them as needed. And we've got Oakley Collier on board to handle that project for us. There's, it's multiple projects. They'll be broken into groups, and I'm not sure how the breakdown will be, but we don't want to have nine or 10 contractors that we're having to deal with at the same time. So we're likely to break them into groups of three or four together so we can have one contractor doing multiple projects. But this is the contract for Oakley Collier to begin their work on that project, if you will, those projects, if you will. It's a straightforward AI contract, but I've been through it. Dustin's been through it, and Dave's been through it, and we're satisfied with it.
Pleasure of the board.
I'd like to authorize the chairman to execute the service order to master agreement and adopt the capital project ordinance.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to adopt, and it's by Commissioner House. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
One thing with regard to these projects, I need to add, and mainly so that you don't get surprised down the road, we're in the initial phases of this. Kitty Hawk is a little further along in the station that they're building that we're going to rent space from them in. And their numbers have come in pretty high. The cost to do this is more than what we thought. I think with COVID and steel prices and construction labor costs, all those, the numbers have gone up. In our CIP, I think we have $20 million?
Oh, grand total?
Grand total.
19.
19 million. It's likely as we start getting nearer having real numbers for these things that we're going to have to revisit that number for all of these projects and make sure, you know, we redo our CIP, if you will, to account for those cost increases that we know are coming. We just don't know what they're going to be yet. So I, I tell you that because I don't want to show up at a meeting in a CIP or at a board meeting and you say, oh, we thought it was going to be this and it's going to be that. Nobody can tell you what the cost is going to be next month, much less a year from now when we get started. They can tell you what it costs them to do the one they did last week, and those numbers are higher than, significantly higher than, than what we thought. So when we started this stuff like two years ago and put, put these in the budget. So just be aware that that's coming. There could be some sticker shock, and we just have to figure out, you know, what we're going to do about that as we figure it out. going to have to revisit that number for all of these projects and make sure, you know, we redo our CIP, if you will, to account for those cost increases that we know are coming. We just don't know what they're going to be yet. So, I tell you that because I don't want to show up at a meeting in a CIP or at a board meeting and say, oh, we thought it was going to be this and it's going to be that. Nobody can tell you what the cost is going to be next month, much less a year from now when we get started. They can tell you what it costs them to do the one they did last week, and those numbers are higher than, significantly higher than what we thought. So, when we started this stuff like two years ago and put these in the budget. So, just be aware that that's coming. There could be some sticker shock, and we just have to figure out, you know, what we're going to do about that as we figure out what the real numbers are.
Yeah, it's kind of the nature of the beast right now in construction. Construction costs have just gone through the roof, and it's, some of the construction products are coming down, but others are not. So, it's kind of understandable that it's going to be, it's going to be more than what we thought it was going to be two years ago, so.
That brings us to item 11. This is a resolution to authorize the use of electronic advertisement for contracts subject to GS 143-129. What this is, is in the bid statutes, when we advertise, we have to advertise it in the newspaper and all that, and it doesn't change anything. We still have to do that. But in a rebid situation, and it came up, we were afraid it was going to come up in the beach nourishment. If we have to come back and rebid using a newspaper on a rebid project, it takes away time, and we had some critical time elements with these projects that we're doing because we have to get LGC approval. That has to jive with the bank financing, and then that has to jive with the contract we're going to do with the contractor. And then that all has to come into place and be ready to go so they can start on the start date. And juggling those times a week makes a difference. And what this does is it allows us to, on a rebid, use electronic means to advertise the rebid so we can do that immediately. We can do it for the minimum, I believe it's seven days, and, is that, yeah, seven days, and allows us to rebid it and get it going when we don't have enough bids. So, if we'd only had two bids for this project, we could have rebid it. You can't accept three bids. You've got to have three bids to do it. If you don't have three, you can rebid it. And then if you only get two, you can accept one of the two. And it would have let us rebid it in a week rather than multiple days trying to hit the schedule of the newspaper. And then we, we would, in this particular case, have missed the LGC deadlines, which would have put us into January, which would have delayed signing the contracts, which would have put the projects at risk. And so, what this does is it allows us in future projects, not just beach nourishment, but any of them, on our rebids, to rebid them electronically. Again, the initial bids still have to be in the newspaper, just like we've always done. But on a rebid, we can do this electronically and save that time, especially where it's time critical like it was with these beach projects. Did I get all that right, Dustin? All right, okay. And so, that's before you, that resolution's before you for approval.
Now, on initial bids for like a new project, could those also be advertised on the website and in the newspaper?
Well, we do that, but you have to do it in the newspaper. You can do it in addition any way you want.
Right.
So, yes, Dustin does that. We try to get it out in every source we can because the wider spread we can get it, the more bidders we get. And with more bidders, you hopefully get better bids.
Okay. Move to adopt the resolution.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to adopt the resolution to authorize the use of electronic advertisement for contracts and services subject to GS 143-129. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, item 12 and 13 are very similar items. I'll tell you, they're the county attorney's nightmare because they're contracts that we're asked to enter that are not negotiable. You like to say everything's negotiable. Well, these are one of those that are not. In the Medicaid transformation, if you will, the state has entered contracts with various providers throughout the state. And this is true not just in this particular case with the one call, that's for non-emergency ambulance transportation, but for anything where you get Medicaid reimbursed. And you have to then, they have a contract to provide funds to these companies, insurance companies generally. And then for us to get reimbursement for the services we provide, we have to go through one of these companies, and we have to enter into a contract like the one before you.
Yeah, the one call was, is that like just a middleman processing company?
Correct, exactly. You hit it right on the head.
Yeah.
You don't get to choose which company?
We do not. Well, so...
Isn't that great?
The, well, the recipient, the patient, there are two or three companies that provide the service. They get to pick whether it's one call or whomever else. And if they pick them, then one call then is the middleman between us and the patient. And so, and the only way we can get paid for that transport is for us to follow whatever's in this contract and get our reimbursement at the reimbursement rates that are in the contract. And if we don't enter the contract, then we don't get reimbursed, and theoretically, we don't provide the service because they will go to somebody who does provide the service and pay them at the same rate that was negotiated by the state. So, we're stuck with this. In this particular case, Jenny and her team have looked at it. They're okay with it. The reimbursement rates are fine. They're at or about what we're doing. It puts another...
Are the rates in here? I didn't...
I don't know if they are or not.
No, I didn't see. I was looking for them. I didn't see them in there.
Yeah. One call is, of these types of contracts that we've looked at is a pretty good one. There's really not any huge issues in there for us. And so, that's what it is, is so that we can get reimbursed. Just because we're talking about it, I'll move on to 13 too and talk about them at the same time. WellCare is a provider agreement. It's the same thing, but it's not just for EMS. It's for, it's for the actual EMS service, for the medicine and what we would charge because you got an EMS call. It's not for the non-emergency transport, which is what one call is. And so, again, there are a number of companies, WellCare is one of them, that provide this intermediary step, if you will, and we have contracts with some of them, and this is yet another one. We've entered contracts with Health and Human Services before you approved or authorized me a while back to approve those without bringing them back to you, like with Blue Cross and Blue Shield and Humana that become the middlemen for those kind of reimbursements. And we've done those contracts already. They were not negotiable either, which is why you told me, no reason to keep bringing them to you. These are multi-year contracts, which is why they're on there. My authority only goes for a year, and these are multi-year. They're automatically renewable until we terminate them. And so, they require your approval. And so, what I need is approval on both items 12 and 13 of those two provider agreements.
I move for the county manager to sign the agreements on both.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve both.
Yeah, I second.
Commissioner Ross, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I went to the WellCare's home site and looked at the company's reviews, and they're horrible.
Yeah.
So, that's why I asked if we had any choice on who we could use.
Yeah, Jim.
Negative reviews were overwhelming.
Well, Wally and I have spent a lot of time on this. It is a half-day session to go through what Medicaid transformation is doing to the state and Medicaid recipients. It is, it is astonishing.
So, the reviews that you read are from the Medicaid recipient's side?
Yes, they were.
And that's not us? All this is, is when we have a Medicaid patient and we do what we do, we have codes for everything that we do, and we fill out the form code and request reimbursement. Whereas previously, we would send that in to the state. We now send that in to WellCare, and WellCare then sends us our check for those services. That's our relationship with them. How that's going to work and how fast we get our checks and all that remains to be seen. I would tell you, and for example, there's a company, and I can't remember the name of it, that wanted, that is doing transportation. So, and our transportation department has nothing to do with EMS, that is the contractor for people who are on Medicaid that need that transportation. Medicaid would reimburse the transportation department for that. It's a very minuscule piece of our overall transportation plan, but in their contract, which was not negotiable, they said they needed to, us to install their computer program. They wanted them to train all of our drivers to their standards, and they had to go wherever they said go or do whatever they said do to train them. They were going to schedule all the appointments. So, if you called and needed transportation, you would, and you're a Medicaid recipient, you would call them, and they would then tell us when we had to be where. And, and because it was such a small part of it, we said, no, thank you. We can't change our whole operation to the detriment of all of our other riders to accommodate this small thing, and this is too intrusive, and they weren't really willing to discuss and change that. The regional system in Elizabeth City had the same problem. They didn't enter it either. It won't really affect the Medicaid recipient because they're required, this company's required to find a transportation source. If they have to call a cab, they got to do something under their contract with the state to provide the Medicaid recipient transportation. And so, because they can't get it with us because we wouldn't sign the contract, doesn't mean they don't get transported. It just means they don't get transported by us. So, I don't, you know, we haven't had any issue with that so far, but that's where we are. And unless, you know, they come around a little bit and, you know, and make it where we can operate the way we operate, then we're not interested in dealing with them. So, this isn't probably going to be the last thing that we hear about this, but just to keep you all in the loop.
Bobby, there are five insurance companies that are handling the standard plan, of which WellCare is one of them. The other ones being AmeriHealth, Corridus, Healthy Blue, which I think is an offshoot of Blue Cross, Blue Shield, United Healthcare, of course, WellCare, and Carolina Complete Health. Do we have contracts with all of these folks?
We have contracts with, I don't know if we have them with all of them, with respect to Health and Human Services. We have it with, we've, the Blue Cross, and now WellCare with EMS. I don't know whether we have them with the other ones or not.
I would be surprised because any, any standard plan Medicaid eligible person that comes in, you know, can, they can choose whichever one of these insurance companies they want to represent them. So, for us to get reimbursed, I think we'd probably have to have a contract with all of these folks.
And, you know, again, until, what happens, they send us the contract, and they say we're the provider and we have patients, so you need to sign it. And when we do, we either sign it or bring it to you, if we need to bring it to you. All the ones we've gotten, we've either signed because we could, or we've brought them to you also.
Got you. It's, it's just the way things are going to be going forward.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just the nature, nature of this Medicaid situation.
I don't know how it's going to work for the patient. And hopefully for us, it's just a matter of we send our billing to a different address and we get paid. And if that is, then there's no harm, no foul to us in particular. But that remains to be seen. We don't know how it's going to work yet, so.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, next on the agenda is a proclamation for Constitution Week, and with the chairman's permission, I'll read that proclamation.
Absolutely. I believe...
I'm sorry.
I believe Ms. White would like to make a few comments.
Yes, Miss Ma'am, I'm so sorry. And it's written right on my thing too, so Mrs. Peggy White, come up, please.
Please come forward, Ms. White. Welcome this morning.
Thank you. And I've had all my shots, so I'm okay.
Good.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm Peggy White, and I'm the resident of the Virginia Dare chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, and I promise I'll be brief. The DAR is a patriotic organization that encourages education and historic preservation throughout the communities in America. We have chapters in all the states and in many foreign countries. In 1955, the president general of the DAR adopted a project to promote the observance of the U.S. Constitution and the signing of it. And her idea was to have a memorial week beginning on September 17th, which is the anniversary of the signing of the Constitution. And in 1956, President Eisenhower officially recognized the Memorial Week of September 17th. So, in keeping with that, I and the other members of the Virginia Dare chapter have presented you a little booklet, which should be interesting, U.S. Constitution and fascinating facts about it. And we ask that you proclaim the week of September 17th as Constitution Week in Dare County.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. White. Thank you for what your group does. We appreciate it.
And I'll read, this is a Constitution Week proclamation, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2021, marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas it is the privilege and duty of American people to commemorate the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, the Dare County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23 as Constitution Week and urge all citizens of Dare County to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. In witness whereof, I fear and to set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the county of Dare to be affixed as the 7th day of September 2021.
Mr. Chairman, there's a typo in this.
Yeah, we got it.
You got it?
They got it.
I'll move to approve.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chairman. There's a motion on the floor by Vice Chairman. It's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you for this and SAR, and I appreciate all your good work. I appreciate their good work on a national level, but here as well. And thank you for coming today.
All right. Those in favor of the motion then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
All right. Item 15 is a resolution opposing the United States Fish and Wildlife Service's proposed designation of Critical Habitat Unit NC-1 and NC-1A, which is the Outer Banks and Hatteras Island Shoals with a red knot rufa. You've seen some of the things that I think I emailed to you all a while back on this. The red knot rufa is a bird that has been designated as an endangered species, and that was done some years ago. And from the park service level, they're already making some accommodation for them already because they're an endangered species. Apparently, there was a lawsuit up in Massachusetts that, to try to get Fish and Wildlife to designate Critical Habitat area for that. Apparently, when you designate a species as endangered, you're then required to designate Critical Habitat, and it had not been done for the red knot rufa. They got sued, and the court ordered them to do that. They did a study, and the result of that study was red knot rufa. Critical habitat designation occurred throughout the East Coast wherever the study showed it did, and the Outer Banks or the Hatteras Island became one of those areas. The red knot rufa doesn't live here or breed here. It's basically a stopover place as they migrate north to south or south to north. They stop and rest, and then they fly on.
Yeah, I actually looked at that, Bobby, and they are going from the southern portion of South America to the Arctic.
Right.
That's unbelievable.
And have been since the Pleistocene era.
Yeah. And so, the, the, the issue for us is we've just went through all the similar things with regard to the piping plover and the beach closures and all that. And we've got a management plan in place. We've got public acquiescence, if you will, to that plan, and it works smoothly and we're used to it. We all work around it. We fish around it. We do beach nourishment around it. We tailor activities around it. And now, to add another layer, we kind of don't know what the result's going to be. If it corresponds with, you know, the piping plover and the closure times and locations are the same and all that, then it's not going to be a big deal. But if it's not, then the potential's there for an added layer of closures, an added layer of timing. The things we do on the beach are time important. You can't do some of the things certain times of the year. And so, if you close the beach in the spring and summer, for example, then... And so if you close the beach in the spring and summer, for example, then we can't do beach nourishment. And so, you know, we're concerned that this is just gonna lead to some other unknown consequence, unintended maybe consequence, that will create problems for us in the future. And so we think we need to get on record opposing this. I think Rudy Rudolph from down in Carrick County had sent out some information, and I shared that with you all as well. They are of a similar concern and had circulated this among the coastal communities. And so it's for you to approve. If you have questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them, but this would signify our opposition. I have been working with Danny because he has contacts with the various user groups that we worked with when we were dealing with the piping plover. I think he's talked to most of them. Most of them support this resolution and think it's the right way to go as well. So I'm glad for you to add anything to that, Danny.
No, there's a good way in and intelligent way in. And when we get to the reading of the resolution, just, you know, make sure that, you know, we underscore that Outer Banks has never been identified as an important stopover. It's classic overreach.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think Vice Chairman Ogerman has something.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On June the 5th of 2014, Chairman Warren Judge and I met at the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Offices on Roanoke Island for a public comment period when the Redknot was first being considered as an endangered or threatened species and to discuss its implication for the OBX. The following is a summary of my remarks at that time. We are an area under siege by environmentalists and naturalists. As of June the 3rd, 2014, 25% of Body Island and Hatteras Islands are closed to ORV traffic, and only about 50% is open for pedestrian traffic. This is for three piping plover nests and seven active horse to catcher nests. And now special status is being designated for a bird that flies over 9,300 miles in its migration from Tierra del Fuego at the southern tip of South America to the Arctic Circle where it breeds. It is a hardy beast. Virtually all of their layover is in the Delaware Bay, where 90% of the entire population can be found there in a single day. The reduction in horseshoe crabs is listed as maybe being responsible in the decline in Redknot numbers. Redknots eat horseshoe crab eggs to fatten up for their trip to the Arctic Circle from this layover. There's a little irony there. But the horseshoe crab has been under management since 1998 because their blood is used in a test that is the world standard for bacterial contamination in medical equipment and injectable drugs. In the millions of years, I didn't know that, I can't say Pleistocene. In the millions of years they have been in existence, they have endured extreme variances in predation, climate, food sources, and so forth, and they have survived and at times even thrived. Again, they are a hardy beast, but they are being used as just another layer. It is time to remember that humans are part of nature too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. County Manager, you'd read the resolution.
This is a resolution opposing the United States Fish and Wildlife Service's proposed designation of critical habitat unit NC-1 and NC-1A, Outer Banks, Hatteras Island, and Shoals for the Redknot Rufa. Whereas on December 11th, 2014, the United States Fish and Wildlife Service listed the Redknot Rufa shorebird as a threatened species under the auspices of the Endangered Species Act, and disclosed a compulsory critical habitat designation would be forthcoming in 2015. And whereas the designation of critical habitat can impact a wide variety of coastal projects involving federal action, which include activities or programs of any kind authorized, funded, or carried out in whole or in part by federal agencies pertaining to coastal and inlet management activities such as dredging and beach nourishment projects that are permitted and are funded or implemented by the United States Army Corps of Engineers, and hurricane recovery activities financially supported by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And whereas, other federal actions can involve the administration of the National Flood Insurance Program, implementation of building codes, federal grants for public access, and infrastructure improvements, and other programs and policies. And whereas on July 15th, 2021, nearly seven years after listing the Redknot Rufa as a threatened, as threatened, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is proposing to indiscriminately designate the Outer Banks of North Carolina 11,367 acres of occupied habitat in Dare and Hyde Counties as critical habitat identified as unit NC-1, and Outer Banks, Hatteras Island and Shoals, Dare County NC, which is 5,754 acres of occupied habitat in Dare County, consisting of beach shoreline from the southeast side of Oregon Inlet, south along the ocean-facing side of the island, including P. Island National Wildlife Refuge, encompassing a total geographic footprint of 13.25 miles to the, 13.2 mile, 25 miles west to the east side of Hatteras Inlet, and 4,940 acres in Cape Hatteras National Seashore, and 814 acres that are uncategorized. And whereas Outer Banks Unit NC-1 and NC-1A has never been identified as an important stopover for the Redknot Rufa in any previous publication authorized by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Whereas the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service also specifically disclosed special management considerations for the Redknot Rufa will be necessitated to address threats to critical habitat and are divided into seven categories. And moreover, some of the activities cited in these categories include recreational beach use, beach driving, predation, beach nourishment and sand fencing, dredge material disposal, inlet relocation, and human-caused disasters. And whereas these special management considerations therefore can unnecessarily and negatively impact the local, state, and federal economies and the public's access and enjoyment of the beach. And whereas, not only has the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service's proposed, proposed all of Hatteras Island and Shoals to be designated as critical habitat, but all the remaining beaches of Dare County as well includes over 50.8 miles of oceanfront shoreline encompassing the entire Cape Hatteras National Seashore and P. Island Wildlife Refuge III, meaning all oceanfront shoreline is proposed as Redknot Rufa critical habitat. Whereas the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has also proposed, proposed to extend the continuous Redknot Rufa critical habitat in Cape, in the Cape Hatteras National Seashore as identified in units NC-1 and NC-1A, and when combined with other areas, totals over 150 continuous mile stretch of North Carolina oceanfront that is proposed as Redknot Rufa critical habitat. And whereas the proposed designation of more than 150 miles of continuous stretch of Redknot Rufa oceanfront shoreline strongly implies the U.S. Fish and Wildlife's designation methodology is too sensitive and broad, and therefore is capturing all habitat instead of critical habitat for the Redknot Rufa. Therefore, be it resolved that Dare County is strongly opposed to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service's proposed designation of Redknot Rufa critical habitat along the shorelines of Outer Banks Unit NC-1 and NC-1A as set forth in document number 2021-14406 of the Federal Registry, and will work with state and federal resource officials and elected representatives to ensure the critical habitat designation as proposed is not included in the final rule. Be it therefore resolved that Dare County hereby request the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service revisit the Redknot Rufa critical habitat designation methodology in a manner resulting in a more fine-tuned designation of important habitats for the Redknot Rufa rather than broad indiscriminate continuous stretches of oceanfront shoreline, most notably a more than 150-mile continuous stretch in North Carolina that includes proposed unit NC-1 and NC-1A in Dare County. This the 7th day of September 2021.
Thank you, County Manager. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Commissioner Tobin in House made the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
All right, Mr. Chairman, that brings us to the consent agenda.
Okay.
On the consent agenda, you have the approval of the minutes from August 16th. You have the 2021 CRS Annual Report. You have the Designated Agent Approval Form. You have Health and Human Services, Public Health Division, School Health liaison funding. You have the Health and Human Services, Public Health Division, Breaking Through Task Force Public Awareness Campaign to Address Community Mental Health Grant. You have Health and Human Services, Public Health Division, Quality Improvement Design Team stipend, and you have the Health and Human Services Johnson Control Service Agreement.
Is motion on the floor to approve by Commissioner Bateman, has been seconded by Vice Chairman Ogerman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next, Mr. Chairman, you have your upcoming board and committee appointments. In October, you have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. You have two terms expiring there. In November, the Older Adult Service Advisory Council has three terms expiring. The Rodanthe Wave Salvo Community Center Board has two terms expiring, and the Stumpy Point Community Center Board has one term expiring. And finally, in December, you have the Equalization and Review Board with five terms expiring, and the Special Motor Vehicle Valuation Review Committee with three terms expiring. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that'd be your agenda.
All right. That brings us to item 18, Commissioner's business and County Manager's business. Vice Chairman, do you mind kicking it off this day?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mentioned just a few things. On August 19th, we celebrated National Aviation Day at the Dare County Airport. There were quite a few tents, quite a few displays out there. I know that Danny had a lot of conversation with some folks out there that he'll probably address later regarding drones, which was, which was quite interesting. Also, on September the 1st, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners had a COVID-19 webinar where they gave out the very latest information on COVID-19 across the state and discussed to some extent what some of the counties are doing. Then on September the 2nd, Commissioner Ross and I were in a virtual meeting that Trillium had regarding the Regional Community Crisis Plan, which by state law they are compelled to do. And we had that discussion with Dare and Carrick County. And basically, one of the big things that was in that involved transportation, which we addressed here some months ago, actually, as a response to the initial discussions regarding this community crisis plan. But that was a good discussion as well. Do you want to thank, again, our service pin recipients? I don't know if you took the time to add it up, but it was 140 years of service. That is just, that is just remarkable, folks. I mean, we, what a crowd we've got. I mean, we are, we are very blessed.
Amen.
To have the employees we have. And also, congratulations to our Employee of the Month, Hannah Wallace. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. Friday, the County Manager and myself were over at the courthouse for the swearing-in of Jennifer Bland as being her newest District Court Judge. Jennifer was an officer in their recovery court and did a great job in helping us out there. She's also a district attorney. And now she's our new judge, and look forward to her doing a great job there. Congratulations to the service people working here in Dare County. It's a, we got great folks working for us, really do. A question, Bobby, there's been some emails going back and forth about broadband. Has anyone contacted or talked to Charter about whether they're gonna be in a situation or to give us broadband in different areas?
Yes, someone asked. Commissioner Ogerman has spent a huge amount of time trying to get answers from Charter unsuccessfully. So we don't know the answer. We're, we, that area is designated. Charter does have money to do it. What we can't pin Charter down on is when are they gonna do it? And it's not for lack of trying in that area. I'll tell you that we also met with the Admiral Commission last week, Commissioner Ogerman, Commissioner Ross and I. And they're working on a plan to bring in the last mile in all the counties in the Northeast and went through that plan with us. They're in a, the first stage of this has already been commissioned, and it's a study to find out exactly where that needs to be done. And then they're, they believe that once that study is done, that there are sufficient federal funds to make that happen, and that would include making that happen in Dare County in the areas that aren't currently served, or at least aren't currently served at appropriate levels. And so that's in the works too. So everybody's aware that there is a broadband issue in certain places in the county, and, you know, we've pushed the providers. They're profit motivated, so they go where they make money. But the Admiral Commission is working to make it happen, doesn't require someone making a profit. So that's all in the works. I don't have any schedule of time as to when that could be accomplished, but it's all in the works.
And Wally, thank you for all you're doing behind the scenes. I asked that question just so the people in the TV land would understand that there's people out there trying to get answers that's just not coming as quickly as we would like them to. Terrorist Bureau, we've got some crazy numbers coming up, folks. We've had a very successful year in the county. The good news is, it's after Labor Day. And so I can take a sigh of relief. Ross, we're coming in the day, and actually, last week, it became apparent, I think I'm gonna make it to Labor Day. And it was just a busy weekend, as Danny shared earlier, but we're through it. And so now we get to enjoy, this time of year is when the people who want to be on vacation, the people who love life come down to the Outer Banks, you know? And it's just, it's, I'm looking so forward to airfall business. Hopefully, the storms will stay away and, and we can continue our profitability for the year. Thanks for letting me share.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. Where's your count?
Occupancy numbers are still very strong. I mean, all the way into November, people get into the Christmas holiday modes, mode there early in December, and that'll be probably our, we'll, we'll only get our real, real breath. And I appreciate the benchmark that Labor Day is, but I don't know how much drop-off there's gonna be. You know, if nothing else, there's a big psychological help for us, like you said, we made it to Labor Day. Thank you, Vice Chairman, for bringing up National Aviation Day. You know, we don't take our position in flight for granted here, the local population, and I'm just appreciative that we continue to put it out there. I can see that National Aviation Day getting some traction. Our Public Relations Department was out there, was all hands on deck. It was a very, very hot day, but everybody was there. Lots of our federal, state, and local people were all there. There was no one who was not represented. And as Wally alluded to there with, North Carolina is actually, is a player in the drone industry. And in the recent events that have been going on, you know, on an international level with Afghanistan and whatnot, I mean, you can pick a country, that that's just gonna be a burgeoning industry, which is hardly going to describe it. And our Division of Aviation is out front with that. So hopefully, Kitty Hawk will continue to be just as important as anything else in aviation, and we can stake our rightful claim to that. A day at the docks down in Hatteras, which has always been a just huge social implications. It's a lot of hugging, good opportunity for the island down there and Outer Banks as a whole to get together. But just because of the COVID climate and everything, they've had to really scale it back, which is unfortunate. It remains to be seen what'll happen. It remains to be seen what'll happen. But it was just so many things. There's very little help. It was usually, a lot of people were contributing to that, but they just don't have the time. And unless you want your business to survive. So, we'll just, we'll see what goes on forward. We're just taking, we got through 2020, looks like we're going to get through 2021. We'll just see what happens going forward here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch. Big, big week last week, south of the bridge.
Lot of traffic.
We have a new bridge that is now connected from the south and north end. Big week last week.
Yeah, if I could add, Mr. Chairman, the Rhodey, the Tri-Villages community has taken an active role. They're kind of staking their claim to that bridge, and it's a good thing. We may, there's been some reach out, as this board knows, to our DOT representative, where we could have something similar to the Bass Night Bridge. And the locals getting out there, taking some ownership, so to speak, with it. It's a beautiful, beautiful bridge, and there's a really good view. You're going to have an ocean view now with the dunes there at S Curves and Merlot Beach were in the way. But that's going to be, that's going to change now. And if you happen to be crossing it over a sunrise, then outstanding. Can't wait.
Yep, will happen soon. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tobin?
Okay, I'd like to read a letter that we received from John, from Tony Bellinger, who is our Crowley Project Manager on the dredge. He said, "An assessment has been done to the Conrad facility on Friday, September 3rd, 2021. The yard was found to be in good condition with no apparent damages to the facility or to the project. Everything seemed to be as was left prior to Hurricane Haida. Electricity was lost for a short time but was rapidly restored. The floodgates were closed in case rising water, but water levels were near to the normal state. The project assemblies and erection were not impacted by the weather. It was expected that work will resume on Tuesday, September 7th," so that's today, "due to Labor Day holiday. I'm awaiting response from Corbin to confirm." So, they're getting back to work on it. We were really blessed, number one, that the Eye of the Hurricane went west of, I mean, went east of Morgan City. Unfortunately, it did, the western wall of the Eye did hit Homa. And a lot of the workers that work for Conrad live in Homa. So, our thoughts and prayers go out to them. Corbin lives just on the outskirts of New Orleans. His house was pretty much spared. He lost his fences and his screened-in porch and stuff, but his roof stayed intact. Anyway, just thoughts and prayers out to everybody down there. But it was good to hear that everything's still proceeding.
Great.
That's all I've got.
Good news. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of brief items. I think it was Vice Chairman Oberman that commented on our employees, Employee of the Month, the service awards. You don't hear that kind of emotion every day from presenters and recipients. And the authenticity and genuine care and concern that we see is pretty special. So, I would simply echo your comments, Wally, and reinforce those. Bobby, you've got a heck of a team there, Mr. County Manager, heck of a team. Also, to just briefly comment and follow up on the memorandum of agreement and the follow-through with the opioid litigation settlement. North Carolina has seen 14,700 COVID-19 deaths in total, just over 14,000. North Carolina has seen more than 16,000 opioid and drug overdose deaths, more than all of COVID-19 combined. So, we've watched the entire state, the world, the nation react with sometimes incredible zealousness with the COVID-19 project, problem. I don't think we should just casually say, oh, yeah, opioids. It's a pretty damn significant item, too. Well, since you asked, I have a couple of opioid numbers, or sorry, COVID-19 numbers for you. That was a play on the insurance commercial where they-
Did we? I didn't know we had.
No, you didn't. You didn't. But I am following up your opening statement, Mr. Chairman, regarding vaccination, non-vaccination. The United States, to date, has seen just over 600,000 opioid, or sorry, I keep saying that, COVID-related deaths, just over 600,000. Nearly a half a million, nearly 500,000 have taken place in citizens age 65 and above. That's 80%, 65 and above. That's a pretty strong indication. That's the age group that's significantly at risk. And would echo your comments about the effectiveness in the story from the doctor that you related, especially for that age group. And happily, I will report, and I just did this research, for children under the age of 18, the United States has seen a total of 470 fatalities. That is a population group of about 70 million, just over 70 million. So that the fatality rate happily, again, is proving to be virtually zero in a population that size. Dave, I just want to comment on the resolutions we approved on financing. This is extraordinary. We're basically financing very necessary projects at almost zero, which is practically free money. Obviously, it's not free, we repay it, but the borrowing costs are amazingly low. So again, well done, well managed, really good job. And finally, I appreciate, again, this little booklet and thought, in light of what we see today, I was going to read a one-sentence quote. It's on page 29, and it's from John Adams. "He referred to our Constitution as 'the greatest single effort of national deliberation that the world has ever seen.'" This was 250 years ago, when they were still working on indoor plumbing and lights. And then I compare that to the level of national deliberation we see every day out of Washington, DC. We have come a far, far way from what we saw as the framing of this Constitution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross, appreciate it. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And one thing about with, especially with our employees getting the recognition they've gotten for their years of service and the outpouring of affection from the supervisors and staff, it comes to me, and as being a former county employee, being an employee for the county is not just a going to work for a job. You actually get the feeling that you're actually part of a bigger family. And that actually showed today as well. And going on with, I remember last year, I presented to the board that there was a lawsuit filed by the Coastal Conservation Association of North Carolina against the state. And the complaint detailed how the state has for decades tolerated overfishing of flounder and other species of coastal fish. And also, the complaint chronicles a staggering bycatch resulting in the state's allowing of use of unattended gill nets and trawling in North Carolina estuary waters. The state filed a motion to dismiss last year. The past few weeks, the judge in Raleigh heard the case and decided that the case can move forward. So, we'll move forward into federal court as well. My only reaction to the complaint that chronicles a staggering bycatch resulting from the state allowing the use of unattended gill nets and trawling in North Carolina is kind of a deceptive issue. When it has been said by the North Carolina, not only North Carolina, but also by the US Fish and Wildlife, is that North Carolina is leading the nation in bycatch reductions and trawlings. So, we're going to keep our eye on that lawsuit to find out exactly what's going to happen with that. Also, this past week, the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission voted to approve the Coastal Habitat Protection Plan of 2021 Amendment for Public Comment and Advisory Committee Review. Their overarching goal is long-term enhancement of coastal fisheries through habitat protection and enhancement efforts. And the 2021 amendment contains a suite of recommendations focusing on achieving this goal. The commission also decided not to immediately initiate modifications to small mesh gill net rules, but instead to address the gill net issues as they come up through the Fisheries Management Plan processes. So, I wanted to put that out to you, that there are some actions in our fisheries. And we, hopefully, this is kind of a, I think without doing the banning on, just a blanket banning on gill nets, I think is a kind of a win. But it will be coming up as, like I said, throughout the different fishery management plans. So, I'm pretty sure whatever species of fish that comes up in the next few years under the management plan, I'm sure there'll be something in there about gill nets. So, we'll just have to keep our eyes on that. Our day in history, 1916, United States Congress passed the Workmen's Compensation Plan, or Act, which would enable workers who have been injured or illness on a job can receive compensation. 1940, on this day, was the initiation of the Blitzkrieg, where Germany bombed England. And for our sports fans, 1979, ESPN hit airwaves. And coming up in a few days, just four days from now, will be the 20th anniversary of 9/11. Over 3,000 citizens lost their lives on that day. Now, that's 20 years. If you look at all of our children that are in school at this present time, we're not around on that day. Yet whoever is alive older than that knows where they were on that day when that happened. It was horrific, terroristic attack. Like I said, over 3,000 citizens lost their lives. 343 firefighters lost their lives on that day from the New York City Fire Department. Put that into perspective and bringing that to a local presence. The total firefighting staff, Duck, Southern Shores, Kitty Hawk, Killable Hills, Nag's Head, Mann's Harbor, Chippikamiko, and Buxton Fire Department. That's the number of people that were lost on that day for firefighters. Also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the Marines that lost their lives in Afghanistan recently and the American citizens that have been left behind.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House, and thank you for mentioning 9/11. Be with those families who lost loved ones, but let's also reflect upon the past 20 years of our military who have served in Afghanistan, who have certainly kept terrorism off our shores since that day. Last several weeks have been horrific. No doubt that American citizens wanted to be out of Afghanistan, but how devastating and how horrible the exit call by our Commander in Chief occurred. It's just blatantly unbelievable. And I'm not embarrassed to say that I totally was opposed to the way this has taken place in our country. Who would have thought it would have taken place like this? Just the leadership is just unbelievably horrible, the way it took place. Be with those men and women who've served the last 20 years in Afghanistan and certainly those who have lost their life serving our country. With that being said, County Manager?
Yes, sir, two things. I can't remember how far back it was now, Commissioner Tobin, but we bought bear trashcans at a cost of about $263 apiece to serve the folks in Mann's Harbor and other areas that were having trouble with bears turning their trashcans over. At the time that we bought those, we had to buy them in hungry can increments. I think we bought close to 200 of them at that time. And we sold them back to the customer at $97, which is what we charge people for a regular trashcan, so that they weren't prejudiced. So, everybody who wanted one, got one. Well, we're about out of those trashcans. Commissioner Ross, we didn't think we would ever get rid of them in the beginning.
I thought you were going to tell us we were going to introduce them into the museum and archives, the leftovers, but I'm glad that they've been used.
They were for coyotes.
So, we're just about out of those trashcans. And people who either need one or need one replaced, we may not have one for them. So, the question is, do we buy more trashcans? There's a hundred, we have to buy them in 100 can increments. We don't have anything in the budget for it, so I guess we would take it out of contingency or something to buy them. And if we do buy them, are we going to continue to sell them back at $97? Or are we going to charge the people for the full cost? And Public Works just needs to know what our plan is so they can tell people as they call in what we are or are not going to do with regard to those trashcans. And so, I'm looking for input and guidance from you all as to how you'd like for us to proceed.
Do these work against raccoons, too?
I'm pretty sure they do.
They work, period.
I might be interested in a couple.
Have you seen the Yeti commercial where they take the Yeti coal with a bear and flips it all around and does all that? You can do that with this trashcan.
Yeah. There's, in the entire time in Mann's Harbor, I only know of one trashcan that's got, the bear's gotten into it. And he just, I mean, blind luck was biting the thing that you have to operate with your fingers, and he bit it and the can popped open.
He's a smart one.
He got in. But they work.
What's the difference in that cost than a regular can?
Whatever the difference between $263 and $97.
$170.
$263?
So, we're subsidizing 100, and what did you say?
About $170.
$170 per can.
What does a regular trashcan cost?
That's what I was asking.
$97.
$97.
I mean, what does it cost? We sell it for what we buy it for?
Yeah.
Oh, so that's-
So, we're subsidizing the one nanny whatever?
We did in the first round. The goal was to allow every, so, trashcan history, the first, when we started these trashcans, Dave, you correct me if I'm wrong, because it's before my time a little bit, but I think we provided everybody a free trashcan the first go-around, the first can they got way back in the day. And then after that, if you're a can broker, you replace it, you had to buy it at whatever the prevailing cost, which is now $97. So, the logic when we got the bear trashcans to replace those was we would let them have the benefit of the $97 replacement cost, but we never talked about what we were going to do on the second go-around.
So, how many of them do we have left?
A few. I don't know.
A few, what?
I don't have that number. Five or eight, six, I don't know, not, not very many.
So, is our goal to try to get rid of them?
Oh, heck no.
I didn't think so.
No.
They work fantastic.
Yeah.
Do I buy 100 more and sit them there? Or do we, or do we buy 100 more- Do I buy 100 more and sit them there, or do we, or do we buy 100 more and tell David to budget future revenue to cover that cost, because we're going to charge the customer the full price of the new can next time around? Everybody got one for next to nothing.
I believe that people in need got them for free, didn't they?
No, they paid the $97.
Are you sure? I thought if you were on-
I think, I think so. I'm not positive about that, but I think so.
Okay. I'm not either.
Because they would have had to have paid $97 to replace a regular trash can, I think we chose to say, okay, that's fine. We'll treat you like everybody else, pay $97 to get the $263 trash can the first go-around. But we, again, we never talked about what are we going to do in the second, and if we could go out and buy them one or two at a time, it wouldn't be a matter, a problem, but we got to buy them 100 at a time.
You reckon Carroll County would want, or Hyde would want to split?
Yeah, split.
Fifty-fifty?
I don't know.
Surely they have the same issues we have in Hyde and Carroll.
You say you got eight left?
I'm guessing. I don't really know the number.
How many?
I could find out.
Eight?
Eight?
Yeah. I mean, we only have a few left, and I didn't, I don't have that exact number.
The other question was, how many are you, are she unloading a week or a month?
Well, we, we, it's taken us-
Couple of years.
Two or three years to get rid of the first batch.
Yeah.
So if we bought 100, we're going to have them a while. They're not going, we don't, we're not giving away, I would dare say, we wouldn't get rid of 100 in a year, because everybody who wanted one has had the opportunity to get one. Nobody's asked for one and couldn't get one to date, and so-
What would be the lead time if we ordered them to the time they got here?
Back then, it was about six weeks. Now, what it is now with COVID, I don't know the answer to that.
If, if, if you got to order 100 at a time, we're not specifying who can and can't buy them. If somebody's not in an area that's concerned about bears or raccoons or whatever, anybody could buy one of those, right?
Yeah, anybody. I don't know. We haven't ever talked about if somebody just randomly from New York wanted to buy a can, would we sell it to them? I don't know the answer to that, but anybody locally that wanted one, for sure.
Yeah, I was thinking anybody out of the area would want to buy, and we'd have to charge them for what it cost us, not subsidize them out.
Guys, it's a $26,000 commitment, of which we would recover $10,000, so the subsidy is $16,000 over the next several years.
Yeah.
I say buy the 100 cans.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
You give the motion?
I do not. I just, I'll do it. I just want to be sure, and are we going to subsidize them the same way? And I'm hearing that we are, continue the same process that we've had.
Yeah, I mean, we, we need to at least be able to provide them, continue down the road for the future. I mean, I hate to cut it off.
Well, there's Bear on Roanoke Island now, too.
What?
Yeah, Jim posted one in his backyard.
Well, Bobby Harrell had one in his yard.
Yeah.
Okay.
This past spring, there was one in Duck.
Well, they're going to be in the south lane of the Bass Night Bridge here before long.
All right, I got what I need.
You got what you need?
All right, we'll continue, we'll buy them and continue to do what we've been doing. The next thing is, the last thing I have is, we have, you've probably read, and you've got some of the email about the BRIC grants that are out there for infrastructure and resiliency and those kinds of things, and I've had Barton, our orderways and grants administrators, looking into this, trying to see what works for us and what doesn't. One of the things that first came to our mind was, you know, our stormwater issues and what we were doing on the north end, but other stormwater issues in the county as well. This may be an opportunity for us to get some money for that, to try to work on those issues. Duck was able to get some money to raise Highway 12 as you come into Duck there, where they have flooding. Southern Shore's got some money for a small project. I can't remember what it was for, and, you know, these aren't multiple millions of dollars of grants, but they are fairly large grants. I think the Duck grant was over $1 million. And so this could be an opportunity for us to make a dent in that project up north, in the north end of Roanoke Island that we looked at, and maybe as a result of our stormwater study that's coming, maybe some other ones if we can meet the deadline. But the deadline for this is in October, is that right?
October 1st.
October 1st. And so I'd ask Barton to go ahead and start moving in that direction to get this done, but before we actually sent the application, I wanted to be sure there wasn't something from your perspective that was a higher priority or a different direction that we needed to go in, or whatever, before we kind of got past the point of no return, or we missed the deadline. So that's why I bring it up now, and unless you tell me different, we're going to move forward with the stormwater side of this thing. We've been working off of that Moffett-Nichol study that we've used before. We're looking at trying to fund the DOT share and the Dare County share of that, because we don't have easements and shovel readiness on what would have been the local share, the community share of that, because, you know, I don't know what they can do in that community. So at least we can get some of that done. That's our plan. That's what Barton and I came up with. If you all have other ideas or thoughts, then tell me. Otherwise, that's the direction we're headed.
I think it's a good plan.
I do, too. I think north end would be a priority.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, that's what we're going to do. Barton's already working on it, so we're going to keep doing what we're doing, and we'll have an application in before the October cutoff, and we'll see how we score and whether we get any money or not. But, and by the way, it won't slow down anything that we are doing there. If we, if we get the money, that's good for us. If we don't get the money, then we'll do at least the project that John Deluce is working on now with that culvert, so.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ken, go ahead.
Bobby, I got a question. It just came up, something you said reminded me of it, and with Barton here, it doesn't help me think of it also. Sometime back, we were talking about, this is about derelict vessels and the, you know, vessels that have just been abandoned, and there was a sailboat beside of the bridge over here at Pirates Cove on this side that has been there.
There's two.
Now, there's, now there's two.
There's one that's made.
Now, there's two. But there's a second one there now, and I thought that thing was going to be taken out of there a long time ago.
I don't know whether Barton, I know that when Brent was here, we, I think Commissioner Tobin brought it up, and we went through the process. Is it Fish and Wildlife, or Wildlife Resources? Wildlife Resources now has those authorities, and that one did not meet the criteria. That guy knew it was there. He had it anchored there. He happened to be in jail-
He was in jail.
At the time. Might still be. He wanted it. It was not abandoned. It's there on purpose. There is no rule or regulation that prevents him from anchoring it there, and so on that one, we weren't able to have anything done. The other one that's beached, that's a more recent vintage. I mean, I drive over that bridge twice a day, every day, and so I've seen it out there. It's been out there a few weeks, maybe. I keep thinking somebody's going to come get their sailboat, but I don't know whether it broke loose, whether somebody beached it. I don't know that-
They had anchored, they had that boat anchored in the middle of the channel during tournament week, if you can believe that.
Yeah, that was smart.
In the middle of the channel, and then, I don't know if people were on it or not, but then it ended up up there on the beach.
I'll ask Barton to look into that and get Wildlife Resources to take a look and see what we can do about that one.
There's also been some legislation written up in Raleigh. I'm not sure what the status of it is, that changes how counties can manage that, and it's for all the coastal counties. So if, I don't know if it's passed yet or not.
I haven't seen that it has yet. I know that we, it was-
It's in there.
When it was proposed, we talked about it among managers, because the current legislation's unworkable, and we encourage them, and I talked to Harry, our lobbyist, about it as well, and I talked to Representative Hanig about it as well, but I don't know what the final outcome has been. I don't know if it's in the budget bill and it's all in the pile waiting to happen.
Yeah.
We'll see.
While we're talking about Wildlife Resources, the Bowser Town Boat Dock, just probably 20 feet, 30 feet before you get to where the docks are, there's a telephone pole that is partially to wholly blocking the whole, the whole channel through there, the whole ditch that needs to be removed. It looks like a telephone pole. I mean, the end of it's kind of sticking up a little bit, and the rest of it's down. In addition to that- Yep. Town Manio, take care of that?
I'll communicate with them.
Okay, thank you, Barton. Additionally, there are several trees, one of which that is dead and laying on another tree that's on the county side, and does our property go all the way to the ditch?
I'm sure that does.
Well, it's, it's a dead tree, a big one, that's, I guess a storm has finally knocked it over, and there's a live tree that's barely holding it up, that's, needs to be pulled out of there as well, and several of those trees that are alive are laying over quite a bit into that waterway as well. So that's something that needs to be-
Highland where they're falling from, or is that swamp?
Bobby, that, that dead tree looks like it came off up on the bank.
Is that on the landfill side?
Yes.
Okay, so that should be, I'm just trying to think, how, how would we, I'll see what we can do. I don't know. We'll see.
I mean, that, that is something that needs to be looked at, but that telephone pole, I know a bunch of boats were having to try to dodge that thing Saturday. Thank you.
Is that it, County Manager?
That's it. Yes, sir.
Okay. Public Information Director, Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us today?
No, sir.
Okay. Go Bull, go dogs. Looking good.
We'll see.
Mr. Clausen, do you have anything else for us today?
Just on item that, I'd sent you an email about last week, and Cheryl just handed it out, is to adjust the home health and hospice, the budget to the final numbers. The retention bonuses were less than what we'd budgeted before, and the first time I gave you the budget, I just left out and forgot the attorney fees. So the net result is you have $5,754 more in the reserve for future use line items than what we thought.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That brings us to the end of our meeting, and I need a motion to adjourn until September the 20th. Wow, so moved. A motion on the floor by Commissioner House, as a second. Commissioner Bateman, any further discussion? Hearing none, no evidence, favorable, signify the sitting, aye?
Aye.
Pose like sent. Motion carries unanimous.